Today, it is our pleasure to celebrate the accomplishments of six outstanding young people as we present the Youth Excellence Achievement Awards, known as the YEAI Awards, which will be presented in the multipurpose room downstairs, which is where I just ran to. Sorry for the delay. This is the 12th year of the program, which is created to recognize young people's positive contributions in areas such as academics, community service, athletics, and performing arts. I look forward to this ceremony every year. It's one of my most favorite. And with that, it warms my heart to give, then gives me great hope for the future to see how these young people have accomplished so much in such a short period of time. Before we introduce the honorees, I want to recognize the members of the Hillsborough County Commission on the Status of Women. The Commission on the Status of Women does an outstanding job each year of selecting the YEAI Award winners. It is, it must be a challenge because there's so many great candidates, but just to pick six winners, all wonderful nominees, we truly appreciate your service. Commissioner, I'm sorry, the Commissioner in Status of Women Chair Lee Lowry is with us today along with a very special guest, which I, Chair Lowry, would you like to say a few words, followed by Tony DiSilvio?
Good morning. Thank you so much. We're really pleased to be here and thank you so much to the Board of County Commissioners for all their support of us and to you, Chair Overman. I'm excited to represent the outstanding women of the Commission on the Status of Women. A little bit about us, we are members appointed by the Board of County Commissioners members or we are assigned because of our position in the community. We represent organizations like The Spring, Myoan Hillsborough Community College, USF, and many, many others, Children's Board. And we support the Board of County Commissioners by studying issues affecting women in Hillsborough County. Two of the really fun things that we get to do is this awards, this is one of our very favorite things. And then we also support the Women's Hall of Fame. So if you haven't ever seen that, it's right now at the Arthenia Joyner Library. We recommend you go look at those outstanding women, too. We have some exciting issues in the year to come that we're planning to study, so stay tuned. We're really excited about those. But this morning, of course, is all about the YEAI Awards. And it's absolutely true, these are outstanding students. It was incredibly hard to choose. We're thrilled to be here. They're really here today. That's really neat. But we had, I think, over 50 applications in our three categories for high school and for middle school, and we had to pick just three high schoolers and middle schoolers on the top in all those. So parents out there, I see you smiling. You should. You have some really terrific kids. We're very proud to have them in the county. And I hope that one of these young women someday might wind up in our Hall of Fame. I wouldn't be surprised. So thank you so much again to Tony Salvaggio, who made an incredible donation to these students. They're all receiving a laptop today. So Tony, would you like to say a word or two?
Thank you. It's good to see you, too.
Hey, good morning, everyone. My name is Tony Salvaggio, and I'm not from around here. I actually was born and raised in Venezuela, and I came April 11, April 10 of 2011. And that's why everything that's happening here is so important to me, is when I came here to this community with very little, this place gave me everything. It opened its arms to me, to my dream, to my vision. It gave me my business. It gave me my wealth. It gave me my two precious daughters. It gave me my friends and everything that I know. So I will be forever indebted to this place, this city, this county that believed in me since I started. And it's just a small token of appreciation to let you know that the community is here for you, the same way that it was for me. So keep trying to be the best. Keep pushing, keep studying, and we'll always be here for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
This is why we love living in Hillsborough County, right? All of our six honorees have demonstrated a very special drive, determination, and commitment to our community that are critical for the next generation of leaders in our community. Too often, it's the worst examples of team behavior that are displayed and get attention on the internet and in the news. We take a different approach in Hillsborough County. The young people who devote themselves to the betterment of our community through strong leadership, through determined action, will shape Hillsborough County's future. This board and the residents of Hillsborough County are committed to honoring and encouraging all those efforts that these young individuals have provided. And we had many applications to consider. When we have 50 young people that actually apply and make it so hard to choose, that says a lot about the young people in our community and the support that they get from the community. So today, we celebrate the next generation of YEAI Awards. There are three categories: leadership, volunteer or community service, and success despite difficult odds. One award in each of the category goes to a high school student, and one award is presented to a middle school student. Commissioner Kemp is here with us today. Will present the first two awards. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
The YEAI Award recipients in the leadership category demonstrate positive impact on others in an ongoing endeavor such as sports, academics, or the arts. Will Brenna McGuire and her family please join me at the podium? So thank you for coming, Brenna. A student at Tinker Middle School has a very special attitude for someone her age. It is see a need, fill a need. She's made a significant impact on many lives. As a member of a military family, Brenna has not let the challenges of deployments, moves, and uncertainty get the best of her. In fact, she's used this service to our nation, which includes living in five states and four countries, as an opportunity to help others and grow her leadership. Despite frequent moves, Brenna was a Girl Scout for five years and earned the Bronze Award for a community service project. In addition, she's participated in multiple theater and aerial arts performances. Brenna only arrived at Tinker last school year, but what an impression she's made. She's an officer in the Future Business Leaders of America, the managing editor of the Tinker K-8 Year Book, a team leader in the Anchored For Life Program, which helps military children with transition and change, and as an A4L team leader. Brenna helped recruit representatives, lead meetings, plan activities, and participated in two community service projects. Incredible leadership. One initiative was a canned food drive that benefited the Veterans Food Pantry, and another was Random Acts of Kindness Week, which promotes kindness, which we cannot have enough of. Thank you. As an FBLA officer, Brenna helped plan and lead FBLA activities, including meetings, community service projects, and fundraisers. One community service project was called Soctober, a sock collection drive that helped warm the feet of the homeless. Further, Brenna won third place in the Digital Citizenship Competition in the school district. As the yearbook managing editor, Brenna played a key leadership role and was responsible for leading the design of the yearbook and its completion. For her initiative and go-getter drive, Brenna McGuire is the middle school recipient of the YEAI Award in the leadership category. And this is for you. That's for you. And would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I feel as though I've grown tremendously over the past year, and I would like to thank all of my family, not just the ones here today, and my teacher, Ms. Butler. She's actually the reason that I won this award. She's given me so many opportunities to lead and grow as a person. She led FBLA in April, and she was my yearbook teacher. And I would like to thank her so much for all that, and I will miss her a lot. So thank you so much, and I wish you well in the future. And I'd like to thank all my family as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Such eloquence. You must be very proud. Thank you, Brenna, for everything you do as a leader. And now we'll have a photo taken, I guess. Just maybe we got it before. I don't know.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you.
Our second winner is an amazing young man who's excelled academically and as an entrepreneur. Our Ashton Kitchener and his family and Barbara Howard joining us on the call today?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Great. We have you virtually. Good morning, Ashton. I understand that you and your family are on vacation, so thank you for joining us virtually today. A Tampa native and middle son of South African immigrant parents, Ashton has achieved so much at Newsome High School as a true leader, where he excelled academically, athletically, and through volunteerism. In addition to volunteering over 275 hours at the Tampa Sailing Squadron over the last four years, he served on his high school freshman, sophomore, and junior class councils. Ashton is also a Tampa Bay lacrosse official, where he's learned the value of honesty and integrity and can be found on the field officiating elementary and middle school lacrosse games. As an AP Scholar with Honors, a member of the National Honor Society, a part of the executive leadership of the ROKA Honor Society, he earned his Associate of Arts degree from Hillsborough Community College and will graduate with a weighted GPA of 7.77. That's pretty incredible. Ashton has proven himself to be a successful business owner as well. He's the owner of ALK Enterprises LLC and a social media influencer. We're all wondering, when you sleep? He will be attending the University of Florida in the fall, where he'll be studying business and entrepreneurship, partly funded by his At Boats Direct Instagram page, which presently has 93,000 followers. Yep. It's no surprise that Ashton Kitchener was chosen as a high school recipient of the YEAI Award in the leadership category. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And we'd like to invite you to say a few words.
Absolutely. So I'd just like to take this chance to thank the Board of County Commissioners, the Board for the Status of Women, and finally, Ms. Howard from the You Matter To Me Organization for nominating me for the award. This award means so much to me, and it's so cool to be here with you all. I wish I could be here in person, but I'm so glad that we could all get together, even though I'm online. So thank you so much again.
Thank you. Are we making your Instagram page? Thank you, Ashton. I look forward to seeing you all, all that you will achieve, and you're off to a great start. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. And thank you, Ashton. You're a rock star, obviously, so we're looking forward to seeing all the wonderful things you'll do in the future. Thank you very much. And with that, I want to introduce Vice Chair Smith, who will do the next two awards. Welcome. Good morning. The YEAI Award recipients in the volunteer and community service category give their time to make life better for others. This describes Benjamin Mallon to a T. Benjamin, would you and your family like to join us at the podium? I am especially happy to be giving an award to Benjamin Mallon. He's a student of Coleman Middle School, where I was a student once, a long, long time ago. In fact, I was a cheerleader for Coleman, it was Coleman Junior High at that time. So it's my honor to be able to present this award to you today. Benjamin Mallon is a young man of action, sharing his generous heart with many people in our community. A lover of all sports, Benjamin wanted to do everything he could for young people who love sports but can't afford the equipment. Focused and on his own, Benjamin reached out to the Tampa Bay Sports Commission in December and asked about designating Replay Tampa Bay as his beneficiary for his bar mitzvah project. Replay Tampa Bay is a donation program for new and gently-used sporting goods. And Benjamin organized his own collection drive, created flyers, advertised on social media, and promoted it through his school and among youth sports leagues. His passion for philanthropy and sports resulted in a Replay Tampa Bay record of 800-plus sporting goods items and about $1,800 to support underprivileged youth in our community. Benjamin, what a big heart you have. This extraordinary effort isn't all that Benjamin does. A straight A student who regularly makes the principal's honor roll, Benjamin is on the math competition team at school and participates in the Best Buddies Program. This wonderful program facilitates one-to-one friendships between individuals with and without intellectual and developmental disabilities. Benjamin also volunteers for the Buddy Baseball Organization, which pairs players with special needs with buddies so they can play baseball together. A socially-conscious student, Benjamin also volunteers for Metropolitan Ministries. My goodness, are there enough hours in the day? And has hosted lemonade stands to raise money for victims of natural disasters, religious hate crimes, and cancer research. Benjamin's drive and desire to improve the lives of others make him this year's YEAI Award winner in the middle school category of volunteer or community service. Great job, Benjamin. And so I'm going to present, let's see, this is Benjamin's award, and ask Benjamin if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for the honor of choosing me for this community service award. It means a lot to me because I worked hard to benefit Replay Tampa Bay and my community, and I hope other kids will be motivated to find something they're passionate about and to use that passion to help others.
All right. And here we go. And so here we will, we'll take a photo, but your service is an example that everyone can admire. So we'll, with that, we'll have a little photo opportunity. All right. They have the computer, too.
Thank you very much. That'll come in handy. Sure. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, you do? Okay. Yes, you sure do. So at this point, I have the honor of presenting another award to Emily Moore Shreves and her family. Will you all join us at the podium? Good morning and welcome. A senior at Bloomingdale High School, Emily is at the top of her class, ranking first out of 572 students. As a first-generation college student, Emily graduated with her Associate of Arts degree from Hillsborough Community College before the high school awarded her diploma. Her accomplishments have been recognized with inductions into the Beta Club, the Science Honor Society, the National English Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, the Spanish Honor Society, and the National Honor Society, where she was the Secretary of Records. Emily completed AP Spanish and will receive the Seal of Biliteracy for her distinction in a foreign language. Additional club memberships include the Save Promise Club, where she serves as a community service liaison, the Humane Society Club, Mental Health Awareness Club, Ki Club, and UNICEF. But her volunteerism doesn't stop there. Emily currently has 330 hours of community service. Many of her hours were dedicated to the art factory, where she had the opportunity to teach children how to sew. She has given hours to a kid's place, a local foster home, in need of treat bags and donations. She has participated with Metropolitan Ministries, helping package goods for families in need of food, especially during the holidays. When Emily isn't giving back through service to her community, she can be found babysitting between 20 to 40 hours a week. She currently cares for a 10-month-old, 3-year-old, and 5-year-old. After graduating as valedictorian and senior class president from Bloomingdale, she will attend Harvard University. Right. Congratulations. As a political science major, with a minor in international relations or economics, Emily will no doubt continue to blaze the trail for women in leadership. And perhaps we'll see her one day in Washington, DC. For her service and commitment to help others in her community, Emily Moore Shreves is the YEAI Award high school recipient in the volunteer or community service category, and congratulations for all you do. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much. Thank you. It's an honor to receive this, knowing that there's so many students that are deserving of this award. And I would just like to say thank you to my family and my community for making it possible for me to be so involved in. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Emily, and I look forward to seeing your leadership in the future. So we'll have a photo taken to commemorate today. Well, Emily, I'm looking forward to an internship and a local leadership position, and then we'll let you go to Washington, okay? So what an honor, what a wonderful opportunity to celebrate some amazing young folks that are going to make a difference in our community locally. With that, I'd like to introduce Commissioner Cohen. He has the last two awards to offer. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. You know, we talk a lot in our community about resilience, but resilience is a really important quality for people as well. And the YEAI Award recipients in the success despite difficult odds category have overcome tremendous personal obstacles to attain success and have a positive impact on others. Martin Luther King Jr. once said that "the ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." Today's recipients in this category illustrate that philosophy to a T. Would Jay Sean Santos and his family please join me at the podium?
Good morning. Good morning and welcome. Good morning. Hi.
Jay Sean, who attends Franklin Boys Prep, a middle school, knows all about turning challenges into triumphs. Through hard work, support from his loving mother and other adults in his life, and his passion for basketball, Jay Sean has blossomed and continued to grow after some early personal struggles in and outside school, including a period of homelessness with his family. It has been a remarkable turnaround, according to his mom and others who support him. Talented in math and reading, Jay Sean has demonstrated leadership qualities in the classroom, met academic and other personal goals, and is a team player, not just in basketball either. Caring, funny, and bright, Jay Sean now takes gifted classes, received academic awards, and has been on the high honor roll. He is captain of his AAU basketball team. Jay Sean is a natural on the hardwood, playing hoops since he was two, which is amazing. He is a dedicated and active participant in the Lab, the Learning Academy of Basketball, which teaches lessons in life through this great sport. And he has shown Jay Sean is a true champion who continues to elevate his game as he gets older. Jay Sean, for your hard work, spirit, and ability to overcome challenges, I am proud to recognize you as the middle school winner in the success despite difficult odds category. Congratulations.
And let us present to you this award. I hear you're a pretty good trumpet player, too. So perhaps, perhaps next time you'll do that, but right now, why don't you say a few words to us?
I would just like to say thank you to my mom, my fifth-year teacher, and my stepdad, to the Lab family, all the people who nominated me, and also a thank you to Commissioner Cohen for giving me this award. And that is all I have to say for today.
Thank you. Let's take a picture to commemorate the event. The last YEAI Award goes to Kevin Ibarius Nanyez. Unfortunately, neither he nor his family were able to be here today, but we are sending him his award, and he will receive it very soon. At the age of 13, Kevin, in addition to his mother and sister, immigrated from Mexico to escape a violent domestic situation and embrace the American dream. Kevin entered as an eighth grader in middle school with a limited knowledge of English. This period of his life was exceedingly difficult for this young man, but by the end of his ninth grade at Leonard High School, Kevin exited from the English as a Second Language Program and began taking honors classes and advanced international certificate of education courses with extraordinary success. This is illustrated by his final grades and his overall district GPA of 4.0. His language skills transcended the barriers that many newcomers face when starting school in the United States. After graduating, he's starting to make plans for his post-secondary education. He would like to be in the criminal justice and law enforcement fields. Kevin Ibarius Nanyez is a symbol of achieving distinction in his academics while having to learn a new language as a teenager and fulfilling all of the rigorous high school graduation requirements in the state of Florida. In recognition of Kevin's strength, hard work, and caring heart, I am happy to recognize him as the YEAI Award winner in the success despite difficult odds category for high school students. Thank you, Kevin, and we know that no hurdle is great enough to stop you, and we're going to send you this beautiful award. I'm going to present it to Ms. Lowry on your behalf.
Thank you. I'll make sure he gets it.
Thank you very much. All right. Commissioner Overman.
Thank you. I can't tell you how excited I am about all the winners today. They are rock stars in our community. They certainly deserve these awards. I'm so thankful for the computers that they will all have to make their lives better and easier and in spite of the fact that they succeed every day. What a special group. I'm happy to see all of us get together this year to celebrate and congratulate these young leaders. On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, thank you for all that you do to continue to help make Hillsborough County the future bright. Each of you, at this point, you will go on and work in our community. You're a You're a point of pride in our community, and we look forward to seeing the good work you will continue to do in Hillsborough County. This concludes our Hillsborough County 2022 Yay Awards Ceremony. And with that, we'll take a brief pause to allow our special recognition recipients to gather in the multipurpose room, and we'll do a group shot for those that are still present. So please, please join us here.